My name is in council meeting. First of our business is the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, on the consent agenda.
All right, actually, before we get to that, I would like to amend the agenda, make a motion to amend the agenda, please.
Okay. Motion?
Um, is that a motion?
Motion to amend the agenda.
I'll second.
Brandy?
What are you amending?
Oh, wait, I thought, I thought you passed the motion to have that be the whole thing you want to talk about. Yeah, I'm sorry. I apologize to amend under administration adding D, request to approve road closure at the early learning center, and adding E, school parking discussion.
I'll second that.
Okay. Brandy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
And I'm an I. In the consent agenda, we have July eighteenth regular council meeting minutes. Request for alcohol on city property, request to approve updated emergency operations plan, request to dispose of inoperable equipment, request to approve purchase from Fund two eighty, request to approve new hire for vacant public works position, request to approve cemetery board tractor purchase, request for alcohol on city property.
I'll approve all the consent agenda, please.
I'll second.
All right, motion in a second. Brandy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Public input. Troy, are you under public input? Yep.
Troy Kubal Pine Island Hardware Inc., I brought it to the attention of the city that the sidewalk in front of the store is moving and there's a trip hazard, there's some ledges on it. We had an incident here, I think last Friday, where a lady fell on it and came into the store, looked like she might have broke her finger. I want to know who owns the property. So basically, I talked to Elizabeth and she talked to Bob, I think, and they sent me the section sidewalk of maintenance and repair, which is in your laws. Well, it says primary responsibility is the primary responsibility of the owner of the property upon which there is an abutting, any sidewalk to keep or maintain such sidewalk in safe and serviceable condition. So I need to know what's maintained.
Is Bob on the phone? Does he want to add to this, or?
So basically, the way I see it, I don't own that property. My, if you look at where the apartments are, that corner,
where water shut offs are, you follow that down, because that's usually corner of the property.
It's not on my property. But according to what I've been told, it's up to me to fix it. That means it's going on, you're going on land that I don't own. So what is, again, maintain safe and serviceable condition? We maintain it, we clean it, make sure it's clean, but now it's moving and there's a hazard. So I just want clarity and see, so that's, that's my problem right now. And I, the city's sprayed it and they've ground it down some times before. But again, I always assumed that's the cities. So then also have another question is in front of the bank, you have that on ramp, right? That were wheelchair accessible? That was fixed, who fixed it? If the city fixed it, there's.
We take care of the pedals.
Okay, all right. And even that, even this pad next to it then? Okay, so that's not part of the sidewalk then?
It's part of the sidewalk.
Right, but who owns the property? Guess what comes out? Who owns the property?
We just have taken care of the pedals.
Okay. So I'm just, I'm trying to get clarity because I need to know if someone trips. Do I turn into my insurance, or is it the city responsibility? Since it is not on my property. So I'm just kind of looking for clarity.
Yeah, we typically don't address right at public input because we have to look at the things.
Yeah, you, I don't, I don't expect a, an answer to that.
Have you reached out to your insurance?
I reached out, let them know what happened, but said I don't know, if it doesn't happen on my property, it's who's responsible? It's the city, or is it the county? So, I mean, like I said, I can do a claim, but again, my, then my work comp goes up. You know, my insurance goes up, so I'm not against it, but I know ice and snow and all that kind of stuff. Yeah, I, I get all that stuff, make sure it's clean and debris and all that.
We're going to look into this?
Yeah, just look into it.
Yeah, and I, I'd reach out to Bob, and we had a conversation, and like I told you, Troy, I'm not saying I agree with it or don't agree with it, just stating how it is. So it's my understanding that Minnesota state statute, the way it's worded is that in the state of Minnesota, cities have the option of putting that maintenance on, onto the budding property owners of sidewalks. It's my understanding, the history of that was more, more on the maintenance side, snorkel, things like that, but then it just kind of turned into replacement, maintenance, making sure that's, just, just hold on. Just making sure that, that, that sound good. I'm not saying I, I agree with it, don't agree with it. So I was just conveying to you what state statute says, and then again, what our ordinance states, the ordinance that you read, so I'm just stating what, what the information is. So I think it would be, council would have to discuss what, what council would like to do, if they would like to enforce the ordinance that we have on the books, or if they, they would like to choose.
But also, but also what does maintain mean? Maintain is, yeah, it's good, clear and all that. But now if it's a danger, a trip hazard, again, it's not on my property. I didn't put it in.
Suppose the main, the word maintain is left to interpretation, I suppose, and.
I mean, in the past, we, in the past, private homeowners have been responsible for replacing their.
Own, that their property line goes beyond the sidewalk.
That's actually not accurate.
No.
Okay, so it's.
No sidewalks are in the right of way of the street.
The property side of my property, of my sidewalk, and then on the other side is owned by the county, but I am required to maintain the grass, to stay in compliance with weed ordinance. I'm required, required to shovel my sidewalks in compliance with the snow ordinance. Now that needs to be outright replaced, I guess I've never come to any conclusion there, I don't know.
That's why.
We assess it back to everybody when we do property, big, street projects, obviously.
They just need to know what, you know.
Yeah.
So I think that's the conversation that council needs to decide which, which direction they want to take.
Yeah, yeah, I don't need anything tonight, I just want to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Acting, acting mayor, can I just, can you hear me okay?
Yep, go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, so just question, because you're right, we don't normally sort of try to give definitive answers during open forum, but this sounds like a kind of a legalistic kind of thing where maybe we can give a little insight. It, and to, it's Mr. Kubel, do I have that right? Yeah, is there a claim? Has a claim been made, or has something happened that you're making a claim for, or?
There has not been a claim made, they, they came into the store and said that I don't own it, so I sent it to the city.
Yeah.
And other people.
Okay.
Too, and I've sent them to the city. I don't know if anything's been of it, but I just assume it's not my, not my property.
Yeah. Yeah, well, so then I guess I would just reiterate, counsel, what Elizabeth said. I, I acknowledge to her that it's a little unusual, Minnesota's a little unusual in that we have a law that says that cities can make abutting owners responsible for the sidewalk in front of their, their building or their home. Of course, it's kind of obvious why that was the case, you know, back when cities weren't able to take care of every sidewalk in their city. They had to expect private landowners to clear the snow and, you know, so that's the reason the legislature set it up in Minnesota, that we, the cities can make landowners responsible for their sidewalk. Whether that makes sense, and you know, if we should tweak that is something that I think Elizabeth and I now have on our radar to take a look at exactly how you're going to deal with that. But generally speaking, what Elizabeth said is right, there's a law in Minnesota that makes the city's ordinance, which Elizabeth referred to, that says if you have sidewalk in front of your business or in front of your home, you're responsible for it, that, that ordinance is totally legal. I mean, that's, there is a law that says cities can do that, so that's the way it is. So we, I think we should take a look at how we're going to implement that, or how we're going to tweak that going forward. But for Mr. Kubel's benefit, the, the city ordinance is expressly authorized by state law. So I mean, the city has the right to have that ordinance, and it is, it is what it is. And then as to ownership, and I appreciate you under, you know, saying, what do you own and what don't you own? That's a little bit of a complicated, complicated question, because platted lots are deemed under Minnesota law to run to the center of the street, abutting the platted lot. So I don't know if your lot that your store is on is platted, I think it is. If it is, then you own to the center of the street, and the city has an easement over your lot for street and sidewalk. So you're the owner of the underlying land, but the city has an easement for its street and its sidewalk.
Is that piece that caused the hazard, does it need some further work?
It's going to need some work, yeah, we can.
But I mean.
Grind it down, grind it down with market, but I haven't done anything, I just want to get clarity, so I don't take. So, but yeah, we can, it can be ground down, it can be painted, and we've done that in the past, it has been done in the past. So city and me have really grounded down what the city has.
So acting mayor, I, again, I want to recognize your rule about sort of not getting into it when it's an open forum thing, but I, I just want to, since it's on your radar, and I appreciate Mr. Kubel bringing it forward. My concern about that, and this is what Elizabeth and I have talked a little bit about, is I understand that your ordinance basically says abutting landowners should do that, should get involved in dealing with sidewalks, but think that through, right? Do you really want every single property owner in the city that has a sidewalk in front of their house or store to be going out and regrading the sidewalk, or grinding it down, or, right? I mean, there's a little bit of a consistency issue there about how we deal with our sidewalks. So that's, I think, what Elizabeth and I, and ultimately council needs to take a look at, because I totally appreciate Mr. Kubel's concern, which is shouldn't the city sort of decide the grade of the sidewalk and fix it if it breaks? And city has the right to assess abutting owners if we have to fix the sidewalk in front of your business, but that's a whole separate issue. So I think, Mr. Kubel, you're raising an appropriate issue, we just need to kind of deal with it and talk about it, so.
Yep, that's fair.
Yeah.
Thanks, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for it.
Todd, did you want to?
Thank you, appreciate the time. Let me give, come up here and say hi, I've missed a couple of months here, but I think one thing that's coming up at the county, and you guys are thinking it too, and in our meeting today, the word cannabis came up, and I think everybody is, you know, we're in the research phase, and we're definitely going to, you know, consult you guys before we make any decisions. And like I said, the state, I don't think he even has their guidelines out, but you know, the more research we can do ahead of time and, and kind of say what, you know, what do you think your community wants, or what do you think you're willing to have happen in your community? So other than that, our budget is, our first big budget talk is in two weeks, so it'll be real exciting. And you guys, I assume, are doing yours also, and it, other than that, I don't have a lot. I mean, do you have any questions for me, or anything you want me to bring back? I did speak with Elizabeth a little bit about County eleven, and that's still moving forward, property out there by County eleven, so we'll, you know, do what we can once that gets finalized, there's just permits to apply for, you know, from the county, when, when the actual.
Access to others.
Access.
Oh, okay.
Yep. So there's nothing for me, I'll be out of your way.
Thanks for your work, appreciate it. Appreciate it, good to see you.
Do I have anything else to public?
No, please, so I don't receive any written correspondence.
Okay, then move on to administration. Request to approve road closure at Third Street Northeast for Trailhead. Free grand opening event on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll move to approve the road closure for Trailhead.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Brandy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
And I'm an I. This is. Okay, item B, request to approve EDA facade program application. Do you have anything in that, Mitch?
So just as a reminder, back in twenty twenty-two, the EDA and the city council approved the facade program to set aside ten thousand dollars to help revitalize some storefronts downtown. So far, we have used twenty-five hundred dollars of that to redo old pine, get them some new windows. Last month, the EDA did pass another one. This is for American, or Great American Investments, which is the on-trend building. And what they're looking to do is put in brand-new windows and a brand-new door into that building. There's been a lot of drafts, it's all single-pane, it's really old stuff, but it's going to look great when it's done. In the packet, you do have the quotes along with the application in there. It's going to be a little over twenty thousand dollars to get the job completed. The owner of Great American Investments has already put a down payment of ten thousand dollars, so we are looking to approve the amount of the full twenty-five hundred dollar reimbursement that we do for this program.
Here's a real quick question, is that Great American, I know Trend Out occupies two halves, left half, right half, all together?
They're actually just the one half now.
Oh.
That, just, yep.
Oh, sorry.
Yep. Yeah, that's the building that Great American Investment owns there.
I'll move approval of the request to approve EDA facade program application.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Brandy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Passes. Thank you. Number C, request to approve Amelia Park and Recreation software quote.
So as some of you know already, Stephanie and I have been working with some different software companies looking for recreation software to provide a little bit more tech-savvy service to our residents for park rentals, swim lessons sign up, other future parks or rec opportunities. We sat in on a few demonstrations with different companies. Amelia is by far our favorite as far as functionality, as well as price. You have a quote in your packet in front of you, I believe the price is ninety-nine dollars a month. There's an initial setup fee, but it is by far one of the cheaper options with maintaining all of the functionality that we appreciated. We would like to move forward with this in twenty twenty-four. We would budget for it, get it kind of put together in the winter, and then roll it out for the spring park season.
So it looks like they're charging ninety-nine dollars a month, plus one percent of all customer transaction revenues processed through their platform. In addition, there's a payment processing fee on top of that, so two point seven five plus thirty cents.
Yeah, so they have different processing fees for ACH. They have one percent plus the fifty cents per transaction. For credit cards, it's two point seven five percent plus thirty cents per transaction, which will be invoiced. And then there's a eight, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollar startup fee, and that's for them to build the software. Their software would be embedded in our website, so it can use our website, so people go to our website, go to the parks page, and at that point is where they could click into the different park rentals, or swimming lessons sign up, whatever they choose to do, so.
And would it be eight ninety-nine a year then, so that we could have training or consulting in subsequent years if needed?
No, so, so it's eight ninety-nine for the one-time setup, and then it would be ninety-nine dollars a month after that to maintain that. If we want to like restructure anything like that, then there would be an additional like project fee, so.
And I'm assuming that if we charge twenty dollars per swimming lesson, we would add that two point seven five in as a separate line item, and then they would take their one point oh of the total of that? That make sense? I mean, we, we don't want to, we don't want to eat two point seven five percent, we don't now, we charge about when we use cards. Thank you.
Yep, and then it would, we'd still have the option, obviously, people could call in and pay over the phone, they could do cash check, and they wouldn't have those fees associated with it, it would just be an additional option for online payment that we don't currently have. So we have, we have the option of adding things on the backend of it.
Okay.
So they, if they wanted to sign up online and pay the tran, transaction fee and do everything on their own, they can. If they want to call us, we still have the ability to enter all the information.
So you're still going to use Amelia as a back office if they walk in and pay you cash, you write a check, good?
Yep, so it'll also house all of our organization needs to it. So it'll have the list of classes and rentals and everything on the backend for us to reference as well.
So if somebody chooses to walk in, write a check, they're still going to, we are still going to have to pay that one percent, because it's going through the Amelia system?
No, because it's not being processed as a transaction through Amelia, it's just us plugging in the name, address, things like that.
So not only is it customer-facing, it's a back office software for the city folks and park and rec to use to keep track of things. Just in, in full disclosure to the public, we had a work session today and we saw a demo of this thing, so I think normally we'd have a ton more questions, right? So that just might seem odd that we're not functionality and stuff we're comfortable with, and I'll move approval of the Amelia Park and Rec software quote.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion?
Online swimming lesson signups, that's the, that's the deal here, so.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, Brandy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
I'm an I, and I'll hand things over to the mayor. We're on D, the road closure.
All right, everybody.
Yes, you should have a handout before you. So the Community Education Office is requesting a street closure on Tuesday, September twelfth, from five to seven. Every year, they do an early childhood family education transportation night. They get a bunch of emergency vehicles, and we bring a bunch of big rigs from the city, and the kids can climb on them, look at them. In years past, this has always been at the elementary school. But since we built the new early learning center, they wish to have it at that, at that location, and so they're hoping they can close down that school or that street for two hours. The event is one hour long, but they want an hour for setup.
I'll make the motion to approve the road closure.
Second.
The motion is second to the road closure for the transportation. Yeah, the rate, and now that it's a year, it's been dealt a lot of grants.
You have a discussion, council?
Hi.
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 Very, we'll move on to I M C, which is going to be discussion on our update on the parking.
Do we want to bring up a map so we can show the pieces as we're talking more, or just make the motions and roll with it?
Yeah, we can work on bringing up a map. So we've discussed this multiple times, I think we've discussed it multiple city council meetings, during multiple work sessions, and we discussed it in our work session earlier today, but we wanted to bring it before the public as what to do with parking around the school. As people may know, the city is renting out partial of one of their city lots, and then four spots in another city lot to help accommodate school staff parking, since that's been the issue of staff parking on the streets. And therefore, there, there's not enough parking for patrons of different businesses, so this way we can still have some two-hour parking available of getting staff off the street. With that, today, the city council looked at the streets surrounding the school. There's been complaints that emergency vehicles and that the school buses haven't been able to get through. It's also been unsafe for cars being parked on the side of the street and during drop-off and pickup at the beginning and the end of the school day, so. Kind of turn it over to city council, their discussion.
Do you want one big motion on this, Liz, or do you want it done by street section as we came across? One big motion?
You can do one big motion.
All right, here we go. I am going to make a motion that the following, that we direct city staff to make the following changes to the parking in the affected areas and enforce the parking in there such of. On First Avenue, from Second Street to Third Street, on both the east and west sides of the street shall be no parking from seven AM to four PM on school days.
Right, right there.
Correct. We missed this one, but on Second Street between Main and First, there would be no changes. It would remain, I believe, what is now two-hour parking. Dropping down to Third Street, between First Avenue and Main Street, no change remains to our parking. On Third Street, from First Avenue to Third Avenue, the north side of the street shall be no parking from seven AM to four PM on school days. The south side, no change, it remains unconstricted parking.
Like Jake was saying, this clarification, so no one tried to get some, there's still, we've not had parking crossing the park building there, for the street there. So just make sure you watch that, but I, so you had a motion on this, and you have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. And there, and clarify with the community, this is, school district growing, this is kind of a continuous conversation. It's something that the council has discussed extensively, and it's not something they'd like to either, to try to create problems. We're trying to make some corrections and increase the safety with the increased amount of traffic on there. This is an approach that I think is going to be a focus for the council to take. And we're, we're pleading with the public to use common sense, that's kind of our nowadays times, but we're asking the council, we're asking for some courtesy to the school with this, and asking for some cooperation as well. And trying to not make more difficult. It's going to be partnership with the sheriff's office as well, with that SRO, they're going to make sure that partnership is being followed, so. This is a council decision, and we're working with the city staff on this, and we appreciate their work as well. So.
The motion is second, you have a discussion, council?
Mayor, just quickly, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
So I, I'm not, I can't track exactly the changes being made here, but I would say that some amount of signage probably is going to be required to put people on notice about the changes. So I presume that allowing for some signage to make that change clear is part of the motion, or maybe the maker of the motion wants to clarify that?
Yes, I apologize, Bob, that was pretty well discussed during our work session, but for clarity purpose, this was something that we, all five of us felt very passionate about, that if we were going to direct city staff to do this, it wasn't going to be just police go do this, it was going to be publicly, do you know that this is where the decision came from? It's the five of us. And yes, I can amend my emotion to, I mean, I know there, this, there's a reason we did it now, it's because we want the science order to get it installed before school starts, or at least shortly after school starts. So I will amend my emotion with all other word mumbo jumbo to include that, yes, it will not only be signed, but it will be advertised in all pertinent forms of communication we discussed today at the work session.
No, please, second.
Second. Anybody else?
Can you get a question? Yeah, enjoy your floor. Can't believe it. Top was the third and top, who must have parked in the middle, the parking lot. That's some staff that's still parking. And that's going to be considered pro parking, yes. I'm just saying, if the desk comes through, then we will have base street, we'll have that side. That goes up a bit a lot. From my set, other. I'm just, I'm just, look my head up, may have.
I would, I would say do a follow-up conversation with the.
Yeah, I just, I mean, we'll see how it goes, but if we didn't have any issues.
Correct.
I think it's great, that was all right. This can be a good problem. Keep in mind.
I don't think we've had a lot of problems on that street, I think the majority of it is around the school during drop offs and pickups, so.
Hi.
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 We have some representatives here, welcome gentlemen.
I can run with it, um, so we received an application for variance from Ag Partners, um, in relation to the. Building height as well as the front yard setback, um, for their property at four seventeen North Main Street. Um, if my understanding is correct, they planned on just demolishing, uh, the current storage bins that bought Fourth Street as well as a couple of buildings over there. Um, and reconstruct some larger bins, um, to kind of expand their capacity. Um, the current maximum height is four stories, forty-five feet, um, for that zoning district. They're requesting the new bins be built to one hundred and forty-five feet, um, therefore a. Variance of ninety-five feet to the code is required, um, same with the minimum front yard setback is thirty-five feet. They would like to construct the bins, um. With a fifteen foot setback to the front yard requiring a variance of twenty feet. Um, we had a planning and zoning meeting last week, um, where we discussed this, um, just some points of clarification. Um, that I know Bob would like me to address, um, there is some verbiage in the report, um, that discusses building the bigger bins in the same footprint as the current ones. Um, I should have picked better language, um, they're obviously not gonna fit the exact, um, footprint of the bins, but they will not be. Getting any closer past the property line that they already are, um, an interesting fact about the current bins is, um. It's my understanding that their grandfather did, they're legal non-conforming as they already cross over, um. What the threshold is for that setback, um, so in reconstructing them, um, they will not be getting. Past where they already are, but they will continue to not be. They will continue to be non.
No closure to the street.
Yep.
Than they are now.
Correct, um, they will expand, but will all be on the backside of. Lot. Um, so in your report, um, I kind of dis- I discussed the. The required. Sorry, blanking. The different standards that they have to meet, um. And we discussed at the planning and zoning meeting, um, that they do meet all these standards, including the practical difficulties test, um, the three-pronged test, which allows for city to. variance, um, we did not discuss at the planning and zoning meeting any, um. Sorry, any conditions on the new buildings, um, in talking to Bob. Um, he raised some concerns about a building of such height not having any conditions attached to it, um, as far as appearance goes, since it will be. The highest building in town, um, I believe, the cheese dryer at Land O' Lakes is a hundred and twenty-five feet, which they got a variance for back in the nineties. Um, so this will exceed that slightly, um, so he, he urged that we have a discussion regarding. The. Conditions for the height of that building, um, if there are certain. Aesthetic things that we're looking for.
Isn't the grain leg that's on the southwest corner of the property already far exceeding the height of Land O' Lakes and this? Okay, so it's going to be similar in height to the grain leg that's on the southwest corner of that property. Okay, I said, I'm just, in the back of my head, I'm going, Land O' Lakes is nowhere near as tall as that, okay?
You gotta have somewhere to store grain.
Well, I mean, we're an agriculture.
Yeah, we're a farming community.
Hundreds of years.
This, this is easy.
My question goes back to just the, uh, be the page just after the overall, um, plan page. There's a drawing of two built, two large bins connected to a building and then some smaller bins. Is those, the building in the smaller bins, is that existing structure or is this all going in that northeast corner?
Um, my understanding they can jump into is that everything to the south of the two bins is existing.
Okay.
Um, the, they're, they're taking out additional buildings.
Yeah.
The two beds, but not replacing them.
And it looks like you're also demo- demoing the Anhydrous area with no plans to build there currently? Oh. Okay, there's an arrow that says demo existing bins and buildings over there too, so.
So I think that, that arrow is.
Okay. I mean, yeah, it's, it's going to be similar in feature, structure, design, look to everything else is on that property. Um, Ag Partners has been a valued part of the community for, to be, since I believe the exception of the town, so. First, I ask you no problem with this, and I would move resolution twenty-three, twenty-five.
Oh, second.
Oops, sorry, read that.
I, I just, I assume Bob might have input, um, as well, and I know Craig has reviewed the site plan and he may have, I don't know if he has comments, but he may have comments, so. Just to get all the info out there before we.
Shoot, sorry.
No, you're good.
I'll, I'll start, Bob, but, um, yeah, just a couple of comments we met with, um, the, the property owners and. And went through and kind of walked the site and looked at it. The bins may be a little farther away than we are right now, but they will not be any closer, um, looked at some right of way states there that have established that, so. Um, so that was, I hope that worked out as far as the height goes. Uh, we did add a little bit of lights to the bin, uh, that they were originally requesting and that would include the catwalk.
Can we ask him to bring back the Christmas tree?
We're trusting you on aesthetics, I guess, is what we're saying, so, don't let us, don't let us down here, okay?
They don't really make a giant bin so pretty, it's silver, I mean, maybe put a giant mural on the side that says City of Pine Island.
Oppose the water tower, these things do get, oh, we're not talking about water.
Yeah, I do, um, can you hear me? I keep asking because I'm not sure if you can hear me, so. Okay, sort of hear me, um. Yeah, so, no, I just, I raised a question about, um, a hundred and forty-five feet in Pine Island is very tall, I would say. Um, and of course, Ag Partners is never going to do anything crazy. They're gonna operate a business and they're gonna be great, but land changes hands. And certainly I've seen up here in the metro where developers do crazy things, they acquire land and they. Press their views on local governments by painting things pink or putting lights on them or doing, you know, so I'm a little concerned about. Twenty years from now, if the ownership ever changes, do you want to have some restriction on what? Can happen with a very tall structure, the tallest structure in your city? In terms of lights and, and painting and things like that, so. Um, I just wanted to raise the question with the council whether you were worried about that, or if you see a reason to impose some condition on what it looks like.
I mean, Bob, can we legally address it?
I mean, it's an hour and everything, I'm assuming, right?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, I, I think if Ag Partners sells tomorrow and. Something else happens with it, I don't think we have any.
They're not going.
recourse, is there, they could do whatever.
No. Yeah, no, if you grant a variance that allows a grain bin to be constructed at a hundred and forty-five feet. Despite your forty-five foot or whatever it is limitation. And it get, gets constructed and then later that property changes hands. And you have no limitation on what can be put on it, they can put whatever they want on it, so. I mean, that's my concern is that ten years from now. I have no reason to believe that Ag Partners won't own this forever, but if someday they don't own it, for whatever reason. And you don't put any conditions on the variance, then. I think people can paint it pink and put lights on it and put whatever signs they want on it. So if you're willing to take that risk, that's your call, that's not my call, but that's, that's the issue I'm raising.
Uh, Bob and Liz, how do you feel with a reference to? Any adornments outside of egg? Representation must comply with the City of Pine Island's signage ordinance.
Jeff, what are the?
Yeah.
Is it, is galvanized or?
Galvanized steel, I'm sure, yeah.
Yeah. Has to remain galvanized and finished or?
If any changes are.
Or paint.
Meant to happen, it has to come before.
Boy, I'm not trying to government this thing up very bad.
Exactly, me either.
I'm really not, but.
I mean, it's one thing if it says Ag Partners on the side of it, it's, I mean. But to Bob's point, in twenty years, none of us may be here, and if somebody else has it, could they do something else inappropriate or was deemed inappropriate at time?
So I, I think the whole thing can. Yeah, so I think the whole thing can be addressed by saying that you're approving. The a hundred and forty-five foot, which is a ninety-five foot, I think, variance, whatever it is, you're approving the hundred and forty-five foot tall bin. As depicted in the schematics you received. And if, i- i- so if that language can just be added to the resolution that you're approving that height. A- as depicted in the schematic you received. Then if they want to change the look of the thing, you'd have to approve that, right? So that, that would be the, that would be the hook that you would have, um, and I think that would be fine.
Yeah, I mean, we don't really have pictures of the.
We don't have elevations, you've got a plan.
Yeah.
I, I understand, but I mean, it, well, is that right? There's no elevations that have been provided, I guess I haven't seen the whole planning packet.
Believe we have one, um, it's just, it, I believe it's CAD file, the technology to get it displayed here is a little above and beyond.
So, I mean, as presented at the time of building, you're, right, I mean.
Sure, that works, yep.
Yeah, but I said.
Yep. Yep. Yeah, I, I would say to cover my concern, if you just included, you know, make the motion to approve, which you've already done. To include that any material changes in the aesthetic of the grain bin must receive further council approval. Or something to that effect, that would allow the council in the future, ten, five, fifteen years. To say, wait a minute now, what are you doing here? We don't want that on the side of your grain bin.
Yeah, that's fair.
Can I just say what Bob said, is that good enough?
Yeah, yep.
Stephen is, okay, yes, okay, so the, I meant the motion to include that the aesthetic is that of a grain bin, and if there's a future change, whether it's now or twenty years from now, that. It'd be revisited at that time.
Perfect.
Three second. Three, three second.
Motion second. Any other discussion?
Hi.
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 Thank you, guys.
Yeah, so mayor, council, this is for work completed in the month of July and includes a lot of the underground, um, and work up to, say, Fourth Avenue. On Fourth Street there, so, um, contractors put, put them right along, um, we'll see a lot more activity this week with a lot of concrete and. Herb, flat work, sidewalks, driveways, all that's going to be happening, scheduled to happen this week, so.
It's happening. Looks nice. Doing a nice job.
The weather holds up.
Thanks, Craig.
So, um, this, uh, this includes a little over fifty percent of the work, um, as far as the cost items goes. Next month's bill will be a little bit larger, but it will include a lot of the servicing work.
I'll move, uh, I'll move pay estimate number three. Second.
Craig, uh, how's, how's the communication going so far with Fourth Street President, so we're all.
I, as far as I understand, yes, the gas is going well.
We had this one guy storm into city hall on Friday, cause a scene, but he's, he's been taken care of, so.
Council's been great to work with.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they're first class.
Hi.
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 I do have one thing, so I know I said this last month, and I'm saying it again this month, so we have yet different reports this month for claims. Um, last month, we had to manually create all of our claims, um, reports because we're in the middle of. Financial software, we're almost complete with that, but we weren't able to pull all the reports, so the reports that you see this month, they are quite different than the information that we got in the past, it's the same information, it's just presented differently. Um, but these are the, how the reports will look going forward with the new financial software.
Second.
Hi.
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 Before we go into department, uh, reports, I was gonna share here in public, what two, just a reminder, Pine Island's gonna be hosting Zero Project. Um, it'll be coming up on Tuesday, August twenty-second here in Pine Island, both, we have in, uh, first runners, firefighters and military. Uh, individuals that are gonna be biking across Midwest and coming to talk, so there'll be at Allegiant Hall approximately two PM. Um, there's gonna be free food and things going on up there for the community to come out and support, um, these individuals, the money that they raise all go back to support, uh, your military personnel. Respond to the law, so it's a really good thing, uh, we did a fundraiser back in June, and our community is heated. Oh, so that was good, congratulations to come for that. We're going to departments, what about?
I have a couple of things today, um, first off, I would like to say that City Hall in the Listens Road will be closed tomorrow from eleven AM to one PM for our quarterly staff training. Uh, second, I have that, um, for the sanitary district, uh, the joint powers. Had their first meeting this month, uh, going forward, we'll be including those minutes in all of the council packets, so rather than doing a monthly report at these meetings, I'll just be including those minutes. I'll still do an update if there's anything, uh, major to report as we move that along. I'd also like to report that, uh, the Sabroda Area Ambulance had their full board meeting, which I'm on the board for that, um, last month. And the board did vote to increase, um, their per capita by two dollars and fifty cents, um, so that will be affecting the budget a little bit, um, but just. I just wanted everyone to be, um, aware of that price increase, um. And I think that's all I have. No, but I will do my best, um, it looks like from the library that they had three hundred and sixteen new signups and four hundred and twenty people, four hundred and twenty-one people attended the thirty-six programs that were offered last month. Uh, this is also a reminder that the National Eagle, National Eagle Center program was rescheduled to September seventh. So both Heidi and Rachel did a fantastic job, uh, representing the library at National Night Out on August first. So thank you for everyone who did that last month, um, I was an attendance of the meeting, but Salco was able to present to our county commissioners. Um, at their meeting, uh, they did a really good job, I was really proud of Rachel, so, um, she really let Pine Island shine there, so.
Well, just, you've probably seen that a crane out at the plant, getting the funny two tanks done. You guys got time tomorrow or come to pop in?
Yeah.
For replacing the diffusers and stuff.
Okay, I will, yeah, cool.
So I must say, I included pictures in the packet because I stopped out of the plant, I tried to stop out when there's other projects going on and. Um, I talked with Casey pretty in-depth about the diffusers, if you stop out, it's pretty cool, they have the back tank, um, completely empty. As they're replacing those diffusers, there's twenty, twenty of them, um, you can see them in the pictures in the packet, I just thought that was neat, so I wanted to make sure I included that, um, for you guys to see, but I, I strongly encourage you to stop out of the plant and take a look for yourselves.
That's, uh, why don't you know that the EDA's next business after hours is going to be on October eighteenth. Uh, it's going to be in partnership with Thriving Financial and the Pine Island Sharing Shelves, we're going to be hosting at Sharing Shelves. Um, and anyone who comes is welcome to bring donations for Sharing Shelves as well. That was it, that's all I got for you. Yes, the Regional Development Tour, that's going to be coming through on August thirty-first. Um, probably won't notice anything other than a bus coming through town. We'll have some people out at the park and we'll be showcasing our, uh, trailhead and, um, all the new pickleball courts too, so it'll be awesome.
Thanks Mitch.
No problem.
Their schooling this year and, uh, we're finishing up some makeup tests, but right now I think seven or ten already passed. Been fully certified, uh, I know I was able to find, I could get thirty-eight fire students from, uh, Pine Island here. I'm really, really glad to see, uh, for testing. That was really good and they attended a firefighter, ten nation. Time, uh, what do you think, the, uh, Legion, they're hosting that and they did a huge job of helping organize that. Last evening for Sheriff's Office.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, I'm Deputy Matt Hahn. Pretty, uh, pretty uneventful in July for Pine Island, so not a whole lot, I don't want to pass on.
You might want to knock on wood.
Yeah, yeah, uh, it's definitely not a bad thing, so, any questions for us?
No.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thanks for your work.
Thank you for your work.
Appreciate you, yeah.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.